Good afternoon, everyone. Today is February 11th, 2025. It is 3:00 PM. This is a City of Prescott City Council voting meeting. Thank you all for coming. It's always nice to see a very packed city council chambers. Oops, maybe not. Okay, we'll start with introductions and announcements there. Mayor Protam.
And we do have a few. Let's see. The City of Prescott will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day. City offices will reopen on Tuesday, February 18th, at 8:00 AM. Prescott Public Library will be closed on Monday, February 17th, reopening Tuesday, February 18th, at 9:00 AM. Your library without walls offers eBooks, online resources, streaming video, and more, and is available 24/7 at preskettlibrary.info. The City of Prescott Solid Waste Division will not be collecting residential or commercial routes on Monday, February 17th. All routes will shift by one day and be collected on the next business day. The City of Prescott Transfer Station will not be open on Monday, February 17th. The transfer station will reopen Tuesday, February 18th, from 7:00 to 3:00. For further information, contact the City of Prescott Solid Waste Division at 928-777-1116, or visit preskettrecycles.com. The City of Prescott will hold a household hazardous waste collection for residential trash customers from March 3rd through March 28th, 2025. This is a contracted curb-side pickup event, which will allow residential trash customers the opportunity to safely dispose of unwanted household hazardous waste. Pre-registration is required. Commercial accounts or communities on dumpsters are not eligible for this event. If you're not sure which items are eligible for this service, go to preskettrecycles.com to learn how to safely dispose of all of your items. And that's it.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Protam. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor John Wolfinger with Union Church, followed by Pledge of Allegiance conducted by Councilman Gumboji.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have made. We rejoice and are glad in it. As citizens of this city, we're grateful for the beauty, diversity, and resources that have been entrusted to us. Help us to steward these many gifts well. We come to you today acknowledging your power and sovereignty, coupled with compassion and love. We recognize your call to all humanity to seek justice, love, mercy, and walk humbly with you. May you grant us all in this council specifically the wisdom and discernment needed to manage, develop, and guide this city well, in ways that lead to a greater welcome and flourishing for all its inhabitants and visitors. We pray that the decisions made today would promote the common good and a greater unity with one another. May you bless the City of Prescott, its leaders, and every soul that calls this place home. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantalme.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilman Gumboji.
I am here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Montoya is absent from the meeting.
We'll now move on to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on the topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have three open call cards today, and the first one is from Louis, I believe it's Rowe.
How you doing, everybody? Thank you. I haven't been here for about a year. I haven't spoken to you guys in a while, so I'm back. Lot of improvements and advancements based on our advocacy of what we do for neurology. Our group is called Advocacy for Neuroallies. We operate inside the city and the state of Arizona, in some cases internationally. One important topic that I wanted to bring out today to you guys was the article that was put out from the Tampa Bay Times with Nikki Haley. She was the previous governor of South Carolina, I believe. But this pertains to our work, because this is what we do. Okay, so what this goes into is neural weaponry. Okay, so this is a very advanced tactic used on the public, much like the grid, the power grid, how they are able to be hacked, what's going on majority of the time of the day. Well, let me read this. So I'm gonna, this is not gonna take that long. But, okay, so my name is Louis Rowe. I'm a well-known official from the neuro rights advocacy branch in the United States and known internationally. I've been raising concerns about neurological attacks for years, and today I am here to emphasize that America faces a major crisis on neural weaponry. A growing threat of neural weaponry is, exists in its deploy through various channels, including the 5G network and many other types of frequencies, channels that are involved, including medical patient frequencies that relate to medical devices where they can be hacked. However, there was a 2016 executive order put on that, but that's an example. Okay, so Congressman Eli Crane in the 2nd District, he was part of the silent weapons, he was part of the Homeland Security Committee on the issue of silent weapons, which talks about the neural weapons that we're talking about here in this statement that I've drafted out. So in China, unfortunately, that has been diving into our central grid, going into our power and shutting down certain stations and whatnot, has the capability of biohacking people and committing a crime, or, you know, act of war. I don't want to say that too loud, sorry. But Nikki Haley had recognized this and proposed the article in the statements that she made based on what they call cognitive domain software systems. So these cognitive domain software systems rely on biotechnologies, which the US government did put 11 sanctions on them. But still, based on our advocacy and reports that we have, is that it's still going. So this Havana syndrome-type style neural weaponry that Eli Crane is pretty familiar with, it is a raising concern. We call for newer cybersecurity measures. We need better cybersecurity measures, so towns and cities and states are not compromised by the frequencies and all these other things that are collected and combined. Not only that, but being, you know, neuroallies is basically protecting the neural data of the individual, and without augmentation, which is from the Neuroallies Foundation, which we promote. So, and there's already two different laws based on that, which is in Colorado and California. We want to get legislation in Arizona. But we have nanotechnology concerns, you know, people that have nanotechnologies in their body that are being invoked or provoked with these neurocognitive cognitive domain computers that
You have another 30 seconds.
Thank you. That use software-designed systems to attack an individual. So our role is to commit to guiding essential reforms in the medical and the investigative units, police, military, and we're calling for State National Guard to pick up on this, because it is state military. So this has been known. So it's a very great concern, and if it's not, and we're taking care of it, but we want to help you guys understand, know that this is a major issue, it is occurring, and, you know, cyber surveillance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Ruby?
Thank you. Thank you, council. This comment, actually, I would have liked to have had addressed at the special session. It did address a topic that didn't come up, so I just want to share this perspective. Riparian areas near water support wildlife, cool our city, and improve our quality of life. I bike and walk through the area that we went to, and it's being considered for transformation into a paved parking lot at least three to five times a week, and I do not want a parking lot there. In fact, the gravel area it currently is should become car-free and replanted with southwestern trees, shrubs, and grasses instead of being an overnight parking place, and I can say I've seen up to eight cars there overnight. But let's look at the argument that seemed to be used, is that it is good for families that use the splash pad. The splash pad is popular because there is no community swimming pool, and families visit the space because it is the only free public place for kids to be near water in the summer. A place for kids next to a five-lane highway is a disaster waiting to happen. If we really cared about families and children having access to water in the heat of summer, we would build a community outdoor swimming pool. And we have a perfect location. The Fairgrounds Park behind the county building would be ideal. We could repurpose the $15 million currently allocated by our legislators to a private group, and instead, start an outdoor swimming pool at the fairgrounds that would be something for everybody in everybody's hometown, a place for the elderly to heal in water, a place of fitness for adults, and a place for kids to play together safely. Instead of subsidizing a parking lot in a riparian area for the Hilton Hotel and Founding Fathers, let's use our tax money wisely and build an outdoor community swimming pool at the Fairgrounds Park that can benefit all of us, especially families. Please do not pave over the area at the confluence of Miller and Granite Creek. That's it. I see the rest of my time. Thank you for listening.
Kenneth Fiddick?
Good afternoon, Kenneth Fiddick, Soaring Avenue, Prescott, Arizona. Got three topics here. I'll get to the first two. If I have still time with my four minutes, I'll get to the last one. I think I brought this up before. I don't know what the council's done. Maybe I'm not up to speed on the minutes. But my wife walks down at the courthouse almost every day. I do occasionally. She's noticed an increase in homelessness in the morning. I know there was an effort to make some changes. I don't know if the council has addressed that, but I know I strongly recommend it. We shouldn't have folks out there six in the morning, or seven in the morning, that are not residents of the community or taxpayers and such. So people who walk early run into those who may not live here permanently. So I strongly suggest that the city council look at this again. If you've created an ordinance, maybe I'm not familiar with what the latest is, but I'd like to know, maybe the police chief can respond, what's going on with the increased homelessness during the winter, although it's a mild February. What's going on here now? Second item, I know that we had the proposition passed to increase taxes. I forget what it's called, the city tax, or the use tax, or whatever you call it. So I guess I'm gonna come back to the issue of affordable housing, workforce housing. I think it's terribly inefficient, terribly ineffective, and why don't we just pay our police department and firemen more money, or give them more benefits, so we can adequately compete with Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, and our neighboring communities? We're never gonna compete with Denver, Los Angeles, or any of the higher pay, but also higher real estate in these other areas. And if people want to move there and work there, that's their choice anyway. I think people should live where they want to live. I don't think the city should be involved in real estate or renting property to encourage people to move in here for these services. So that's item two. Item three is related to the school district. I'm not sure if the city budget calls for any funding of Prescott Unified School District. You're shaking your head, no? So if it doesn't, then I don't have to address that issue. I guess I'll go to the county supervisors and see if they have something in their budget that addresses Prescott Unified. So thank you for your time, and hopefully something productive will come from your work session and field trip today. Thank you.
Jim, and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name. Schweitzel?
Say yes. Yes is fine. Good afternoon, council. I live in Prescott in the Dells. Been here full-time about three years now, and been in the Prescott area since 2013. One of the things I notice is we have an unbelievable amount of trash in our communities. 89A is a mess. The median's a mess. I've been trying to work with the state to allow the litter lifters in there to clean up. They won't let anybody in, so it continues to be a trash dump. That's the entrance to our community. Last week, 30 volunteers removed 60 bags of trash just along 89. Can you imagine if we stopped picking up the trash? What will the city do? What's gonna be their response? A lot of us are getting old. It's getting a little harder to do it. So we're gonna ask for your help, and I've come up with a proposal called PEP. The first step in this process is prevention, and I talked to Chief Bonnie. She said that they are, I noticed they put out a couple of public service announcements, which I think are great. I'm willing to work with the schools. I was a school resource sergeant in Mesa. For 10 years, I was in charge of the schools. I know we can do LRE for the kids, get them on board with picking up trash, understanding the consequences of trash, and what it does to our community. And I think they will have a good influence on their parents. I'm asking you guys if you can help us with more of the media stuff. I know, Mayor, you have a newspaper article you do occasionally or weekly. If this topic can be brought up and let the citizens know we're concerned about it, and I don't think they all see the amount of work that's being done by what I call the trash warriors. There's quite a few of them out there besides the Prescott litter lifters. Even a couple weeks back, and I don't even know the group that did it, if you were traveling up and down 69, there were about 50 bags of trash in Prescott Valley. And I'm not quite sure what group did it, but thank goodness for all these groups out here. But we need to work on our builders and the people that are causing this trash. And one of the problems we have with the builders is there's no actual compliance. It seems like there, there's no code enforcement on them. Just recently, Woodside Homes put up a sign, which I'm hoping in the prevention aspect of this, we can get all the builders to do that, and it tells each one of their contractors when they come on that lot, "You've got to clean at the end of every day," and it'll prevent that stuff from blowing all over. The next part of the PEP is enforcement. Now, I've called code compliance several times. I started with building inspection, sent them photos. I know I sent Connie photos. Dallin's gotten photos from me. Some of you guys have gotten photos that we can't put up today. But this is an ongoing thing from builders. And I started with Ryan over inspections. I got sent over to Wendy. Wendy told me, "Well, we don't do any enforcement for trash." I said, "Well, you got this law that says, under Code 759, any person, firm, or corporation is responsible for trash they put on other areas." When I was in law enforcement, if somebody came up to us, yeah, we had discretion, but if we had an ongoing problem, we used the laws in the city to actually enforce and stop people from doing what they were doing, in this case, trashing our community. I know we have also local laws, county laws. We have a state trespassing law. Chief Bonnie, I don't know if she's here anymore, but I think we're gonna have a good partnership with her to enforce some of the laws and do like zero tolerance areas along 89. So that will help. I don't think we have any, or we don't enforce the TARP law that we, I think we have one on the books, I was told, but I know people going into the dump station over here on Prescott Lakes, I see them all the time. There's stuff flying out all the time.
30 seconds, Mr. Schwan.
Okay. And finally, we're doing a lot of pickup. There's a program that Mesa did, and it was in reference to the graffiti response, and it's the same thing, the same process. And I'll send you guys out some more information on this, where we established a hotline for people to call, and we went out and sprayed out the graffiti at the city cost. So we need a little more backup and a little more help on the passion trip, on the pickup side and the enforcement side. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody on the council want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Hearing no response, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Consent agenda.
Mayor, I approve, move to approve Consent Agenda Item 7A through 7C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Very good. Regular agenda now. Item 9A.
We have two Consent Agenda ordinances, actually.
Oh, we have ordinances.
We do.
Thank you very much.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2025-1884, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving City Contract Number 2025-136, a memorandum of understanding, buy-in between the city and the town of Chino Valley, Yavapai County, Arizona, for the installation and maintenance of a portion of the Peavine Trail, and adoption of Ordinance Number 2025-1890, approving LDC 24-003, a proposed amendment to the Land Development Code, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the City of Prescott's Land Development Code, Section 9.1.5, application completeness for compliance with ARS 9-462.11, and providing a severance provision.
So both of these ordinances can be approved with one vote?
That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Consent Ordinance A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Items 8A and 8B. Please vote. All right, we'll move to the regular agenda item, 9A.
Presentation, discussion, and possible direction in action regarding adding a City of Prescott proclamation policy to the council rules of procedure. Mayor and council, I don't have much of a presentation specific to this item. In accordance with the memo that was included in the council agenda packet, there'd been some concern recently regarding the fact that there is no proclamation procedure or rules specifically within the council rules of procedure. We did present you with a couple of different options. One is to keep the policy as is, as we have been doing it, which is that we have a form that's included in the packet that allows requesters to complete and request presentation of a proclamation. This proclamation request goes to the mayor for approval. If the mayor approves, it's placed on the agenda. If the mayor does not approve, it is sent out to the balance of council, and if at least two members approve it, then it's placed on an agenda, and that is in accordance with Rule 4, Section C of the Council Rules of Procedures, which states that the mayor may place any item on an agenda for consideration or discussion by the council, or any two council members may place an item on an agenda for consideration or discussion by the council. We have been doing it that way to this point. If the council wants to keep doing it that way, we can simply add that policy into the rules of procedure. We can also amend the current process and have proclamations be deemed mayoral proclamations, which would then only be approved and presented by the mayor at his or her discretion. Again, that would then be codified into the rules of procedure. We could amend the current process by having any requested proclamations placed on the consent agenda prior to the meeting, excuse me, that they're requested to be presented at, and then approval would require, obviously, a majority vote of the council, as with any other item. Some other options that we included in here for you all to consider are if the council wishes to hear proclamations for regular or annually occurring events, or only for special local events or milestones. Does the council wish to have proclamations presented at council meetings at all, or only posted on social media, or presented at the event for which the proclamation is in alignment with? And does the council wish to require that the requestor and/or individual being recognized be a citizen of the City of Prescott in order for the proclamation to be considered? So at this point, that's all we really have for you. We did include proclamation request form that we're currently using, but it is up to the council how you'd like to proceed with this.
Well, one wouldn't think that proclamations have become a controversial subject, but I know some of our past proclamations ended up being the subject of a couple of local radio shows that were a real head-scratcher from my perspective. So this may be appropriate for us to consider and include in our rules of procedure. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I really think we need to start a conversation about having a mayoral proclamation policy. When I was elected, we didn't have a policy on naming public city-owned properties, and there were, people were wondering, you know, who should we name things after? So we did find, we did do that, and we have a policy now. And then also, we didn't have a policy on art in public places. And so everyone loves art in public places, and it can be controversial. And so we came up with a policy that had public input and a couple of guidelines. I think the main reason of a policy is to clarify the rules and the guidelines so that the policy can't be, become controversial. And in my research, I looked at Scottsdale, Phoenix, Topeka, Kansas, and they came up, all of them said that the mayor reserves the right to modify a proclamation verbiage or deny a request for a proclamation. And then it, excuse me, some other guidelines as far as it must be a local group presenting the proclamation. the proclamation. Proclamations will not be issued for events or organizations with no direct relationship to the city, or matters of political controversy, ideological or religious beliefs, or individual persons. So I just want to start the conversation, see what things, what people think, and, you know, maybe we can come up with a policy and that will present, prevent people from using a mayoral proclamation for maybe political purposes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, I have a question to start my conversation. Who authors or who writes the actual proclamation?
So generally, the proclamation wording either comes from a past version, because we have a lot of proclamations that we do sort of every single year. We'll update the dates and numbers and things of that nature. But usually, we're kind of just recreating them every year if we get the requests. I have had requests come in in the past where they were looking to recognize an individual or something like that, and they provided us with the language. We sort of formatted it appropriately, fixed some spelling and grammatical errors, and made it presentable. And then we have had times where we got a request for a proclamation with no language. And so my staff and I did some research on whether it was an event or an individual, and put that language together. So it kind of depends, but those have been sort of the three main ways that we come up with the language.
Okay.
We've even had proclamation requests coming from people out of the state that wanted a proclamation to be mailed to them.
Yes, we have.
Signed off by the mayor.
So I guess my question is, because of this recent controversy, and I respect the mayor's decision to pass on, you know, reading it as it was, but I was curious, because I think the key word was that equality got changed to equity. And I guess my question, and if you don't mind me asking you, Mayor, is why didn't you just change it back to equality and read it? I mean, I mean, if we have control over what it says, can't we just change it? If we didn't like the word equity, we could change it back to equality? I guess that's my question, is if it's our proclamation, we can word it the way we want to word it.
Well, I will answer by saying that was just one of several objections I had. So the reference to no longer supporting nonviolence, the suggestion that they would no longer support nonharassment, and then the additional step of changing the word equality to equity. So that was a series of changes that happened over the last three years. But I think that's an example of what might have been acceptable if we had a policy that allowed me to maybe adjust that wording. So it could be a proclamation that I would be willing to support. And if we had that in our rules of procedure, that would have solved that problem.
Yeah, and that's exactly why I'm asking this line of questions, is it concerns me is how did the wording get changed gradually over time if it's the same proclamation, basically, that we're reading year after year? And so it's just kind of caught me off guard, but...
Well, the group that presented it changed it every year.
Okay. That's what I, that's why I was asking, who wrote the proclamation?
Yeah, in that particular situation, it was the organization that was submitting the request.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't have that clarification. So now I'd just like to make my statement. I like the current procedure where two council members can get a proclamation on an agenda. I think that's still important. I don't, I don't think the decision should reside with one person. I think any member or any two members of council should be allowed to say, hey, I'd like this item to be on the agenda, just like other agenda items. And then, secondly, I do have concern about, you know, maybe doing the same proclamations year after year after year. I don't know. I'd like to know what other people's thoughts on that are. But I do feel that there's a lot of feel-good about doing proclamations. I think people really appreciate when their organization is acknowledged or recognized in the community for the good that they do. So I think proclamations are something we should continue to do in a public setting and not online.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I too did a bunch of benchmarking, not only with cities here in the state of Arizona, but also in a few other states as well. And so I do think there's something to be improved with documenting the processes, the right for the city to change the language, the right to deny a request. The other thing I liked in what I saw in multiple cities and beyond Scottsdale and Phoenix, which Councilwoman Rusin mentioned, I also looked at and liked Peoria and Chandler's process. I liked the fact that Peoria made it an online form that forced people to a level of completion, so at least they give us some language to begin with before they just dump the problem over into our city clerk's office's lap. I also want to hear proclamations that are only from City of Prescott residents, submitted by City of Prescott residents. So there's got to be some level of relevance to the City of Prescott, be that a milestone or noteworthy event, or some recognition that's relevant to the City of Prescott. And finally, I also am open to, in the process, if there is no direct correlation to the City of Prescott, be that an event or something else that's going on, I think we can deny and not have a proclamation. I don't know that I need to hear everything every year, because it doesn't make it special anymore. So I think that puts the onus back on the organization to figure out how to make it special and relevant, not just coming before city council. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gamboge.
What precipitated this?
Staff is always looking at city codes, our policies and procedures, and trying to figure out ways to update them, make them clearer. And when we had some discussion recently regarding a proclamation, we decided that it would be a good time to add this to the list.
I'm okay. I remember I promoted a proclamation one time, and lo and behold, it was from someone out of Tucson. So I would concur with it coming from Prescott. I wouldn't get into the interpretation game of whether it is or is not political. So I'd keep the proclamation processed the way it is now, with the added item of it has to come from Prescott.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I'd like to make a few more comments. The mayoral proclamation is from the mayor, and I think he reserves the right to edit it if he feels, if he feels that he should, because if two city council members issue it, it's not a mayoral proclamation. But an off-ramp to that is the, a certificate of recognition. I don't think anyone would have a problem with two council members presenting a certificate of resignation to, recognition, sorry, resignation, recognition, recognition to a group. And that would be a wonderful way to have our council members honor somebody, or an event, or something like that. But everything, in fact, when I read a mayoral proclamation, I'm not the mayor, and then the last part says, I, mayor, feel good. Well, I'm not mayor, feel good. So I have to wordsmith that a little bit. So I think we should look at clarifying this policy, clarifying it for the public on the application, have a disclaimer with clearly stating our rules and regulations here for the policy, and get some public input before we make a decision as to what we should do. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Cantalme.
Thank you. I also did quite a bit of looking, digging into other municipality procedures, and I was surprised, I think, more often than not, it did fall back on the mayoral proclamation. I would be in favor of that. I also do believe that I would like to see it still continue to be presented in front of council, because it is sort of, it's out of respect to whatever the issue is. But it's also a great opportunity to raise awareness of particular topics. I do think it does have to stay, the topics need to be relevant to Prescott, to the City of Prescott. Thank you.
Well, I think I would concur with most of the comments. I think having a individual or a group, or maybe even a group that's associated with a larger group, might be national. But as long as there's a local advocate for the proclamation, because I think it makes so much more valuable recognition when we have representatives from that group being able to come in front of the council and have that proclamation presented. I do think that giving the mayor the chance and the right to be able to alter the language makes a lot of sense, since the mayor's name has to go at the bottom of it. And I'm just, I recall when Mayor Oberg was the mayor, and he and I discussed creating a recognition for Vietnam veterans. At that time, there was no National Vietnam Veterans Day. So we selected a time in August where the Tonkin Gulf Resolution had been passed, which in my opinion was really the effective start of the Vietnam War. And that allowed us to have a lot of our local Vietnam veterans present in the council chambers to be recognized for their service. So I guess President Trump probably read that and decided to make it a national recognition of a National Vietnam Veterans Day. Maybe, maybe not. So I think being able to have the right to edit, and also making sure that there is a local connection, is important. And then anything that's of a national or outside of the state or area probably wouldn't really be, should be entertained to have a proclamation issued. So I guess we'll have to take a vote here or something, huh?
Well, I don't...
I was just going to say, I think that it's pretty clear direction that to establish the policy, have the right to deny, have the right to change or alter the language, that there must be some relevance or connection to the City of Prescott, and from a Prescott resident, or a local advocate, and that it be presented in front of council. I think that's clear direction from everybody. The one part is, how do we, how does it come to council? And so we had kind of the current process, which two people I mentioned you want, that it be a mayoral proclamation, which one or two, and mayoral proclamation with a kind of alternative certificate of recognition that we have one for. So I don't think we have consensus on how it gets to council. The rest of the policy, I think we're clear where you want to go.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I, after doing the benchmarking, I agree with Councilwoman Rusin's point of view in terms of mayoral proclamations. And I love the idea that she brought forward about, you know, two council members absolutely could do a certificate of recognition, and calling it something different, because the mayoral proclamation has a certain weight, and that's what I'm used to seeing with other well-run cities and towns here in Arizona. So I like her suggestion very much.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I would like to suggest that we bring this back after a 60-day public comment period and get some input from the citizens, and then put it on the agenda for a vote.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again, since they're seeking direction. I also want to second what Councilwoman Rusin and Councilmember Ferworth have mentioned. I think it's a good idea. If it's a mayoral proclamation, then it, then the mayor has the right to change the wording and to present it. And then a certificate of recognition, I think, would be very appropriate. That could be forwarded by two members of council. So that's the direction I would provide.
And what about submissions? Should we consider submission by email, or by filling out a form online, so at least the submitter has some input on how they would at least like the original draft to be designed?
Yes.
Yeah, that would, that would definitely be, from a staff perspective, my preference. We have a number of forms that we've gotten fully fillable online. We do our board and commission applications that way. Our ACCER application, our ACCER trust grant application is done that way. I believe TAC is going in that direction as well. So we can definitely have the form linked on the city clerk landing page and have people fill in all of the appropriate information. I would envision, and Joe and I can kind of workshop this a little bit, but I think including the certificate of recognition coming from two council members within the proclamation policy itself makes a lot of sense, so we can outline all of that as well, because I'm hearing from a majority, if not all of you, that that's what you'd like to do moving forward.
Mayor Protam Cantalme.
I agree with everything Sarah just said. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. One more thing I saw from some other cities is if you wanted the first choice date, like you have on your form there, most cities had 21 to 30 days minimum advance lead time to submit the form in order to make their first date. So I think that should be a lead time that people can work with and not have everything turned into a fire drill. Seems reasonable.
Okay, we can do that. I do want to get everybody's feedback from council on this. If everyone wants a 60-day public comment period on this, for what it's worth, we don't have any public comment cards today, but we could have it ready at the next council meeting, if that's what you all want.
No, I think we can take a vote now. I think you can get your direction here.
I'm saying to bring it back to council. We could have the policy ready for the council at the next council meeting, because I have clear, we have very clear direction.
Yeah, you can craft the direction and then have it submitted for an actual vote to be included in the rules of procedure.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I think you have your direction. Thanks. We can move on to the next.
Adoption of ordinance number 2025-1881, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city of Prescott's land development code, section 2.5.6, Guest Quarters and Prescott City Code 2-1-24, to require a sub-meter for accessory dwelling units, adding a definition for ADUs under LDC Table 11.2.5 General Terms, adding a definition for accessory dwelling unit private water meter to Prescott City Code 2-1-9, and providing a severance provision.
Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members. This item is being brought back to you after council's discussion at the January 28th meeting. And just for the public in the room, ADU is accessory dwelling unit, and we'll go into a little bit about that here. Just a quick recap as it relates to what staff had originally proposed for the amendment to the code. So staff had brought something to council in November, and it was superseded really by changes in the legislature and what was adopted in January. So as it stands right now, accessory dwelling unit regulation is very handcuffed by the state, and the law says, quote, "A municipality may not do any of the following." And these are things we wanted to weigh in on originally. Prohibit long-term leasing. We did want to change that, and that was a big discussion in November. We cannot require additional parking, as it stands in the law right now. And we cannot require street improvements. So all of those things kind of changed the conversation in January. And why this is coming back to you today is based on the conversation that we had. So again, council expressed a desire to address the issues such as parking in the code amendments, but cannot at this time due to the statute. And the statute impacting the ADUs, that section of code, is likely to be updated this legislative session. The legislature is really looking at and has already seen bills proposed for amending this section. So the idea and conversation in January with council was, hey, should we wait to see what the legislature does? In addition to that, the, there was a clear desire of council to require submetering for ADUs now. So based on that conversation, and in order to achieve the goal expressed... So based on that conversation, and in order to achieve the goal expressed by council, in your packet are three recommended code changes. One to the land development code as it relates to guest quarters. This section, we just propose adding a definition for ADUs along with the sub-metering requirement and referencing the city's code section, the code utility section. After last meeting, Public Works Director Gwen Roach and I and legal got together and said, okay, it would be good to have it in multiple places for clarity for the public. So in addition to updating the land development code, the suggestion for council to consider today is updating the utility code, Section 2-1-9, adding a definition of accessory dwelling unit private water meter. And then also, the third and last recommended code change is to Section 2-1-24 in the utility code section, adding language that requires sub-metering, which is called private water meter for ADUs. And those recommendations, the specific language is in your packet, and I can get you. It's, I believe, page 112 through 118 are the mocked-up version of the code there. So for today, what's on for consideration before council is either update the code sections today and then consider again after the legislative session. We could update the code holistically after the legislative session. As I mentioned previously at the last meeting, we are looking at updating the land development code later this year. And then always the third option of do nothing now and wait and see. So that concludes my presentation. The documents are in your packet, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Protam Cantalme.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, I know that we need to wait for the, to see what happens down at the legislature in terms of the parking, but I was curious, were you able to get any kind of a legal definition? Remember, I talked to you about the unimproved alley situation we have here. It's a not-through alley. Did we ever figure that out yet?
We don't, and we need the legislature to weigh in on that for us.
Okay.
Because their definition is defined by them, and it's not clear in the code for us. So we're working on that, and definitely we'll have an answer for you when this section comes back for consideration. And we would likely adopt something similar to what they recommend or what they codify if they end up codifying that.
Other point, so generally when you're talking about ADUs, most people are, it's going to be a separate unit on the property with a separate, obviously now with a separate meter. But what happens specifically to the ADUs that are attached to a current residence?
You can sub-meter residences that are attached, similar to a condo situation.
Right, but are we going to, is that going to be noted in the land development code that it will, even if it is connected?
It's not distinguished, so it would therefore be required to have a sub-meter. It's simply, sub-metering is required for accessory dwelling units. So if they're going to lease a separate portion of their home that's attached or a detached structure, the code covers the sub-metering for both.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. As chair of the Water Issue Subcommittee Committee, we have a lot of conversations about conservation. And sub-metering came to the forefront several years ago because we were having builders would buy one lot and put five homes on it and have one meter. And then human nature being what it is, you know, you have one person trying to conserve, and the guy next door is washing his car every day. So sub-metering has been researched, and you can save 15% to 20% on a water bill if you get the water bill and you're the one paying it. And sub-metering is not expensive. It will add a couple hundred dollars to the unit, but the landlord will get that money, get that money back in water savings. There's many units throughout the older parts of Prescott where the house in the front pays all the utilities for everyone in the back, and they don't know that until they move in, they get a giant bill, and then they realize they're paying for all the utilities on the property. So I think requiring this is to be in step with the rest of our water policy. There's horizontal apartment complexes where people put in casitas and townhouses, hundreds of them, and then they try to hook them up to one meter. And also having sub-metering makes it easier to identify leaks. So I think if we could add that today, I think that would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I am good with considering updating the sections that we can today. I did find it fascinating, though, now that I'm reading the land development code, how guest quarters and ADUs are so intertwined in all the language. We state it upfront separately, then for several in a row, we talk they, 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 so we treat them the same. And because of what's happened from our state legislature and their error in taking the 75,000 population minimum and not applying it as a title as compared to just a section, I think it's fascinating that guest quarters can include a kitchen. Guest quarters, people who are going to stay with you shortly or work for you for a little bit, they can include a kitchen, but ADUs don't have to. So you're going to pay rent for a facility that doesn't have a kitchen. Thank you, state legislature. I also find it fascinating that because we can't fix it today, like we talked at the last meeting, guest quarters have to include an off-street parking spot for your short-term person, but ADUs who are going to be there forever do not have to have a parking spot. So I want to just bring up the irony of what our state legislature has done in this. And I hope they, you know, I understand Representative Bliss has put forward something to fix this. I hope she is successful. I hope the public supports her in getting this to be successful because local control, so we can go back to rationalizing what we can do here, is really important for us to get done. But I'm alignment for the sub-metering starting today. That's one smart local control thing we can do.
They haven't outlawed it yet.
Councilman Gambogi.
The real irony is why we're even discussing this today. I would wait till the state makes its decisions, and then, I think that was your option in the middle, and then come back and revisit this and do everything we want to do at one time.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, just a quick question. If we pass this today, how does it affect existing ADUs versus ADUs going forward? Are we going to go back and try to, okay, they're going to be grandfathered in?
Right. So if they, if they change or in some way make modifications, then we can require it at that time, but there's no program to go backwards and require it.
Thank you.
And just a point of clarification on two things. The separate metering per the utility section is required for multifamily consumer residential as it stands now. So thankfully, that's in the development code for, under utilities. But also, I don't believe they get a separate bill for the sub-meter. The sub-meter is a private meter, but it does provide greater transparency for the landowner or the lessor for that to know what their tenants are using.
Councilmember Rusin.
Can I make a motion? I move that we add private sub-metering to Prescott City Code 2-1-9 for ADUs. Is that right?
So that would be adoption of the ordinance 2025-1881.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay.
And there's a recommended action on the screen there for you if you're, if you're ready to just adopt it as presented in your packet.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt with modifications, ordinance number 2025-18...
Nope, not modifications.
I don't believe you want...
It's as it's written.
As it's written.
Perfect.
Ordinance number 2025-1881.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to adopt 2025-1881 as written. Please vote. City clerk, are we at the end?
We are.
Good. You know, I want to read a quote from one of our founding fathers, James Madison, because we came very, very close to reaching this criteria. Oppressors can tyrannize only when they achieve a standing army, an enslaved press, and a disarmed populace. So fortunately, we are moving away from that precipice. This meeting is adjourned.